Good evening and welcome to the February 8th, 2016 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Councilman Henderson lead us with the invocation. So please rise for that and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this great day that we've had. We thank you for this meeting that we have to get together and discuss issues at hand with the city. We thank you for the crowd that has accumulated to watch us as we take over some of the proceedings. We pray that you just be with us tonight as we discuss and decide in your precious name. Amen.
Thank you. And it's now it's my pleasure to bring the Weebloes den from Cub Scout Pack 1706 and Martell School to come forward and lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening, fellas.
Good evening.
Are you ready?
Yep.
I pledge allegiance-
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I had the pleasure of meeting the Weebloes before the City Council this evening and they asked me some pretty tough questions, so.
Related to dogs.
Lot of dog questions. Thank you, guys.
Bye.
At least he spoke in the microphone. The most important question was, which channel TV is this going to be broadcast on? Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Abraham?
Here.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Here.
Mayor Protem Pennington?
Here.
All presence. Our first order of business this evening is certificates of recognition and special presentations. And C1 is a recognition to the City of Troy men's and women's water tapping teams honored as the 2016 state champs at the AWWA tapping competition. So it's my honor to ask them to come forward. Let's start with the men's first. I'll meet them at the podium because I have a certificate that I would like to present. This is becoming a yearly event with these guys winning this award. So I have a certificate of recognition that I'd like to present, but before I do that, if we're prepared to show the video, I'd like to show the video first so you can get a flavor of what these guys do in like a minute and 10 or 15 seconds. So if we could show that.
Ready. All right, ready. One, two, three, go.
Go boys, go boys. Come on, buddy. Let's go ladies.
Here's that duck of Franklin. Heading on in for the threat. Out he comes, done threading. Top rail off, changing the bit up for the clip. Copper band's going to town over there.
Come on, Richie. Nice job, Scott.
Two thumbs up.
Great job, Richie.
Tapper's nine in the meter stand going for the first one.
Come on, Dan. Come on, let's go. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Here we go, boys, here we go.
I had the pleasure of watching that in person before they went to the state champs. You don't appreciate what you just saw unless you see it live, especially the women's. It's just incredible. So it is my iron privilege this evening to present this certificate of recognition. And I should get the men's. This is presented to the 2016 water tapping team of Scott Cruthers, Mark Paneski, Rich Wiles, and Andy Willetts. So I'd like to read this because I think it is great recognition to this great team and a bunch of small guys, too, if you notice. Whereas the City of Troy tapping team consisting of Scott Cruthers, Mark Paneski, Rich Wiles, and Andy Willetts had a winning time of 1 minute and 16 seconds for the state championship water main tapping competition at the American Waterworks Association State Conference in Lansing on February the 2nd, 2016. And whereas we applaud the City of Troy employees, once again Scott, Mark, Rich, and Andy for their hard work, they practice on their own time early in the morning before work, during lunch, and on weekends, showing the true commitment and dedication. The team is now setting their sights on the national competition at the American Waterworks Association's annual conference during the third week of June in Chicago. So now therefore be resolved that the City of Troy City Council commends the 2016 City of Troy Water Department tapping team of Scott Cruthers, Mark Paneski, Rich Wiles, and Andy Willetts for their fine efforts and extends this token of admiration with which you are regarded in the city. And be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Troy joins the citizens of this community in appreciation and celebration of the 2016 City of Troy water tapping teams winning the state championship and wish them success in June at the national competition. And this is signed the 8th day of February 2016 by myself, all members of City Council. Congratulations, guys, and thanks for representing the city so well. We could show their video. This is really impressive.
Let's go ladies.
Let's go, Kelly.
Here goes, here goes. Here we go, come on, girls, come on, girls.
Quick jump, quick jump.
Yeah, ladies.
Take it up, take it up.
Here we go, here we go, ladies.
Taking that change over, guys.
Yeah.
Go together, go together.
Here we go, here we go.
Let's go, Kelly, come on, Kelly.
Keep it up, Kelly.
We are, go, 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 go.
Keep going, I got it.
Keep going there.
One, two, three.
Keep going.
Stop, stop, stop.
With the yoke guy.
Here we go, here we go.
He's breaking, he's dragging.
Hold on.
Stop.
There you go, Nick.
There you go, right there.
Sheen's coming out.
There you go, there you go, girls.
Come on, girls.
Come on, everybody, come on.
Let's go.
Get it, there it is, go, 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 go.
Get it tight.
Keep going.
You're good, go.
Wait a minute, Ash.
Ashley, just serve me on it. Nice, easy, get it. Keep going, Ashley.
Keep going.
Get it tight, Nick, come on.
You're good, girls, you're good.
Hurry up.
Get the water on it. Get them ready for the water. Not yet, not yet.
No, you can't, you can't take it around.
It's all right, you guys, you're doing great, stay with it.
Doing awesome, good job.
Break it out. There you go, leave it alone, drop it.
All right, girls, all right.
Like I said, unless you're there live to see this happening, I believe you're the only team that one lady actually did that one. It took two women on all the other teams to do what you did with one person. That's incredible. So really now it's my honor and privilege to present a certificate of recognition to the Troy women's 2016 water tapping team consisting of Sina Cox, Kelly LaPointe, Ashley Levin, and Nikki McMillan. And I'd like to read this because it's got some nice stuff in it. Whereas the City of Troy has had a men's tapping team since 1995, it always been their dream to one day get interest from the Troy's female employees to form a women's tapping team. That dream became a reality this past November when five City of Troy employees expressed an interest in being on the women's water tapping team. And whereas for the past 12 weeks, Sina, Kelly, Ashley, and Nikki spent time before work at the Public Works Facility learning how to tap a water main, you have to understand the men work in the water department, these ladies do not work in the water department. The new women's water tapping team had a winning time of 2 minutes and 34 seconds for the state championship water main tapping competition at the American Waterworks Association State Conference in Lansing on February 2nd, 2016. Whereas we applaud the City of Troy employees, Sina Cox, Kelly LaPointe, and Ashley Levin, along with Nikki McMillan, for their hard work, commitment, and dedication as they competed in and won on their very first competition. Congratulations. And as the men, the team is now setting their sights on the national competition at the American Waterworks Association's annual conference during the third week of June in Chicago. So now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Troy commends the 2016 City of Troy Women's Water Tapping Team of Sina Cox, Kelly LaPointe, Ashley Levin, and Nikki McMillan for their hard work, commitment, and dedication as they competed in and won on their very first competition. And as the men, the team is now setting their sights on the national competition at the American Waterworks Association's annual conference during the third week of June in Chicago. So now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Troy commends the 2016 City of Troy Women's Water Tapping Team of Sina Cox, Kelly LaPointe, Ashley Levin, and Nikki McMillan for their fine efforts and extends this token of admiration with which you are regarded in this city. And be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Troy joins the citizens of this community in appreciation and celebration of the 2016 City of Troy Women's Water Tapping Teams winning the state championship and wish them success in June at the national competition. Presented this 8th day of February 2016, signed by myself, all members of City Council. Congratulations, ladies, job well done. Congratulations again, team. Next is C2, Barnes &amp; Noble. Representative Donald Kendall will present a check to the city, and I'm going to ask that Kathy Russ, our library director, come forward and make an introduction. Good evening, Kathy.
Good evening, Mayor Slater. Good evening, City Council members. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Donald Kendall, who is the Community Relations Director for the Barnes &amp; Noble store on John R. Road in Troy.
Good evening.
Good evening, Troy City Council members. Over the last few years, Barnes &amp; Noble has worked with the Troy Public Library on several book fair fundraisers. And since I became the Troy Public Library's Barnes &amp; Noble contact at the beginning of 2015, it had become a true partnership. The idea we had worked so hard to achieve was to take two literacy organizations and make them players on the same team, not rivals. I am pleased to present Kathy Russ with this check for $1,450. This past holiday's book fair was one of the best ever and the most profitable book fair for our store that we've ever had. It has been a wonderful working with Kathy and her team, and I look forward to working with her on more fundraisers and programs in 2016.
Thank you, Donald. Thank you. I'm sure Kathy's got somewhere that she's going to spend that money.
As a matter of fact, we're actually going to split this between the teen collection and the youth services special needs collection. So you can look forward to seeing lots of great new items. Thanks to everyone, the people who came out and supported the library at the fundraiser. Thank you very much for your support and come on over and see all the great stuff at the library. Thank you.
C3 is on behalf of the City of Troy Employees Casual for Cause Program for the months of September and October 2015. Cindy Stewart, our Community Affairs Director, will introduce our guest.
I thought maybe we've got a lot of Lions back there.
Oh, wow.
They want to come up.
Come on up. Come on up.
Come on down.
And be on camera with the Cub Scouts tonight.
We're very proud of our Troy Community Lions. They do a lot for Troy. And it's my pleasure on behalf of the employees to give you a check for $620 for the Troy Community Lions.
Thank you very much. Just a few words on behalf of the Troy Community Lions Club, our sincere thanks. This is outstanding. Thanks for your time tonight. Of course, thanks to the employees for their contributions. We do a lot of work. We serve Troy. We serve the surrounding communities of Troy. You can look us up, we're on the web, so I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, and I know you have a long agenda, but you can look up who we are and what we do. And also, if anyone is interested in joining the Lions Club, you can contact us on the web at troycommunitylions.org. So once again, thank you very much on behalf of the Lions Club. Thanks to the City Council, Mayor, and the employees.
Thank you.
One of our former employees, a retiree of Bar Mihal.
I see that, I see that. Thank you, Lions Club, thank you. And thank you for what you do for our community also.
Thank you.
Next is C4. It is City of Troy, Troy Chamber of Commerce partnership activities. I see Ara is here with us and Glenn Lepin. Good evening.
We're a new tap team for you. No.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm joined today by Ara Tapousian, Troy Chamber President and CEO. And we'd like to bring you up to date on some of the recent Troy Chamber activities along jointly with the City of Troy. When you think of the Troy Chamber and city working together, you probably think of the 50 or so ribbon cutting ceremonies and events that we have jointly conducted in the past year to welcome new and expanding businesses. However, our partnership goes well beyond ribbon cuttings. We work together in a variety of initiatives that are beneficial to the city, to the Troy Chamber, and to the business community in particular. I'd like to highlight a couple of these programs, and then Ara will talk a little about some of the recent programs from this year, or the upcoming in 2016. Through the Business Assistance Team, the City of Troy partnered with the Troy Chamber and Oakland County Small Business Center to provide business assistance to the businesses located in Troy's industrial row area. A community meeting was held for businesses and follow-up resources were provided. The Business Roundtable is a jointly planned City Troy Chamber program that brings together Troy businesses to receive feedback and provide direction for ways to improve on services and issues important to the business community. First joint roundtable was held in July of 2015, and we'll be planning additional ones in the future. On September 19th, 2016, a joint City Council-Troy Chamber Board meeting will be scheduled prior to the regularly scheduled council meeting that evening. This is a change from the originally scheduled date, and you'll be seeing that a little later on in the agenda. This joint meeting will enable the council and the Chamber Board to connect and further discuss initiatives. The city and chamber are currently planning additional joint programs for 2016, and Ara will tell you a little bit more about that.
Great. Thank you, Glenn.
Good evening, Ara.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. It's a pleasure to be here. I haven't been here in a while, so it's very nice for you to have me here. It's hard to believe that it's going to be three years that I've been here, and I think in that relatively short period of time, we've done quite a bit together. And we've got quite a bit in store. So as Glenn kind of addressed what we've done so far, I'd like to address really where we're moving toward for this year, and we're always coming up with some new things, too. But one of the things that we've talked about is an economic development video. How do we capitalize on the entire assets of the City of Troy? All the amenities for the purpose of business attraction and retention. So Glenn, Cindy, and myself, we've been sitting, working with CMN to try and put together a nice short video that we could have, that we could share on websites, and really market and help do that. I don't think we've had anything like that for a very long time. Actually, at the holiday luncheon, CMN was there to capture some tidbits from area businesses that we're going to also use. So we're looking to complete that sometime this spring, and that'll be something new to look for. The library, when I also got here, talking to Kathy, we talked about how do we utilize Troy Library as an asset for the business community. So one of those that we talked about that we're actually got coming up this week on the 11th is a joint event with Oakland County, City of Troy, and the Chamber. And it's just, it's going to be a resource. It's a morning event. We've got 40, 50, 40 people coming to this. They're a mixture of Troy businesses, I think, within the area as well. And so Oakland County is going to come out and do a free workshop called Business Research Feasibility to Expansion. So that's always good, that we've got 40 folks that are coming for something like that. With that, we also want to work with the library in putting together a business resource center. In different communities that I've been part of, the library was a major asset as far as helping with counseling, providing the resources, maybe their books, maybe their database usage and that type of thing. So we've been talking about that as well. Could be something where we partner with the Small Business Development Center as well to do different counseling and whatnot. So that's coming down the road. With that, I want to thank publicly the mayor for helping sort of spearhead the platinum level membership that now the City of Troy does have the Chamber. It's the highest level. I think it's the first time we've done that in years, and so we're very happy for that. We've got a lot more in store. This is for the Chamber side of things, we're going through a whole new rebrand. We're going through a rebranding of our logo. We're doing a new website. We're putting things into place for really the future. We've really looked at, we've gotten down to business, and I would end with this, to say that we've really taken an economic development approach. And all these things that Glenn and I are talking about really is here for the business community. I constantly say access and opportunity is what we give, Chamber members, but also for the entire business community. So we've had actually the best year, last year, for retention with all our businesses really kind of sticking around with us. So we've got more in store. This is kind of a taste of what's going on in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ara. Any questions or comments from Council? Just, it has been a great three years. It really has, Ara, and I appreciate all that the Chamber does for us, and I think it is a great partnership, and that's why I thought we should be a platinum member. So I'm glad we are and look forward to the next year. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
There are no carryover items this evening, so next on the agenda is public hearings. We have three public hearings this evening. First one, E1, is a zoning ordinance text amendment, file number ZOTA 248, which is a woodland protection. I see that Brent Savidant and Ben Carlisle are at the podium for the presentation. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. This item was, is a proposed zoning ordinance text amendment. It was initiated by the Planning Commission. The reason for this is most of the recent residential development that we've seen in the city involve clearcutting. And we've got a lot of feedback from residents of the city, not only adjacent property owners, but also board members such as City Council members and Planning Commission members. They've expressed concern over what this has done to the community character and to those properties. So presently, we have, tree removal is regulated by the Landscape Design Tree Preservation Ordinance, which does not incentivize or require any form of tree protection. So we've seen a loss of community character as well as quality development. So what the Planning Commission attempted to do with this effort is to find the balance between development and private property rights on the one side and protecting the public health, safety, and welfare, as well as protecting property values and community character on the other side. I think they did a pretty good job of doing that. So here's an example of the type of situations we're dealing with. This is a recent development. You see the before shot here of an aerial photograph with a lot of trees, and then you see the after shot, which is essentially clear cut to allow for the 12 residential units that are being constructed. So what we did with the assistance of the Planning Commission is we used five guiding parameters when we worked on this. The first is recognizing that we need to protect what's important. We don't want to protect poor quality trees or trees that are diseased or dying. We want to protect landmark trees and woodlands. And Ben will get into that in a little bit more detail on a further slide. The second parameter is we did not want to be punitive. We did not want to be heavy-handed. We don't actually require preservation of non-landmark and non-woodland trees or replacement of non-landmark or non-woodland trees. We also do not require replacement of invasive species and dead, dying, or diseased trees. The third guiding parameter is requiring tree replacement and incentives, incentivizing, excuse me, but not actually- excuse me, but not actually requiring tree preservation. That's an important point. We're not going to be heavy-handed like some communities where if there's a landmark tree, you cannot touch it. If you still want to clear cut the property, you still want to remove certain trees, as long as you replace a portion of that, which we'll get into, it's okay. The fourth guiding parameter is recognizing that each site is unique. The days of vast farmer's fields are done. Every development we see now is essentially an infill development, and there are challenges. So, we want to allow for creative approaches to developing the property and providing options to the developer. And the fifth guiding parameter, and the final one, is that tree replacement only applies to properties that require site plan approval. It does not apply, and there's a reason that this in bold caps on this slide, does not apply to single-family homes that do not require site plan approval. That is important. There's going to be a term that Ben's going to mention in a few minutes, diameter at breast height, or DBH. To clarify, it's a measurement. It's a diameter of a tree, of the trunk of a tree that's measured at breast height or about four and a half feet above the ground. So, what you simply do is you approach the tree, you give it a bit of a hug, and you measure the caliper. It's the diameter, so it's this measurement, excuse me. It's the caliper, you measure with the caliper, or you take a tape measure, you wrap it around the tree, take that measurement of the circumference, divide by 3.14. I did not go to either of the high schools in Troy, so I can't go further than 3.14, but that's the formula. Just wanted to briefly mention public outreach. The Planning Commission discussed this item at five public meetings. They had a, held a public hearing, and there was one person that commented. That person commented in support of the draft, and the draft ordinance was circulated to about five local developers. I believe two of them are in attendance this evening. And that's an overall summary, and Ben's going to go in a little bit more detail.
Thank you, Brent.
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Ben Carlisle with Carlisle-Worman Associates, and I'm happy to be here tonight to outline the work that we did in collaboration with the Planning Commission in regards to the ordinance. Brent went into a little bit of detail of the parameters under which we developed this ordinance, and I'm just going to go into a little bit more detail about how they actually got incorporated into the ordinance. One of the, probably the primus and most important parameter that we worked under was, let's really focus on protecting what's important. And what's important, for lack of a better term, is really two tree classes. The first is landmark trees. Landmark trees are those large, stately trees you see spread out throughout the community. And what makes them unique is their unique combination of both size and species. There are many trees out there that don't meet the status of landmark trees because they either don't meet the size requirement, or they don't meet the species requirement. So, in your, in the ordinance, you'll see an actual table which lists species and their corresponding size to consider a landmark tree. This does not include invasive species. It does not include species that are not native. It's only those high-quality trees that we're really trying to focus on protecting. And landmark trees are important for a couple of reasons. The first off, they're important to protect because frankly, they're very, very difficult to re-replace. It's very difficult to replace a 50- or 100-year oak tree that is of significant size. It takes a long time to get to that point of the size to meet the landmark status. And secondly, they provide a significant ecological benefit. A 100-foot tree or a large tree can process about 100 gallons of water in one day. So, there's significant stormwater benefit for these large landmark trees. The second class of tree that we're trying to protect are woodlands, and woodlands are dense masses of tree clumps, and they meet the requirement of six inches in diameter at breast height. They're the medium-to-larger-sized trees. Woodlands are important for more of an ecological benefit. They provide significant stormwater management. They provide erosion control. They provide habitat protection, air quality improvements. And lastly, they provide a land-use buffer in between adjacent properties, and that's very significant. One of the concerns that we've heard from residents is that when you're clearcutting, you're taking away this buffer adjacent to the property. The second parameter that we worked under, and this goes really hand-in-hand with what's important, to protect what's important, is we shouldn't be punitive. We shouldn't require replacement of trees that really aren't worthy of replacement. So, in the ordinance, there's actually a list of parameters or tree conditions that we do not count towards the replacement requirements, and these include dead or dying or diseased trees, invasive species, trees or parcels that do not have to go through site plan approvals. So, again, the single-family homes, tree trimming or removal for government or public utilities, as well as trees that become a potential danger to human life or property. If a tree is going to fall on your house, you're not required to replace it with the replacement requirements under this current ordinance. Director Saavedon and I have a line that we use throughout in our office, and that's really that all the easy sites in town are done. They've all been developed. So, right now, we're really dealing with mostly infill sites and sites that are very unique. So, we recognize that the ordinance needed to be unique and flexible to the development community. So, as is written, the tree preservation plan is reviewed by the Planning Commission as part of the site plan review process. It's not an added layer to the review process. It's simply rolled in as part of the site plan. So, in addition to the regular landscaping, site layout, parking, et cetera, this is an added thing that the Planning Commission will review with the applicant moving forward. In reviewing the preservation plan, there are really three hierarchies that the Planning Commission will work under. This is listed in the ordinance. The first is our goal is always to protect and preserve what's on site. We try to ensure every effort is made by the applicant to ensure what's on site. If they're not able to do so, they are allowed to remove trees. However, they have to provide a replacement requirement, and I'll talk about that in a second, they have to replace those protected trees. And third, if they can't do that for some reason unique to the property, environmental, et cetera, they can pay into a tree fund. But the tree fund really is an effort of last resort. We really try to encourage preserving on site as well as replacement, but we do allow the option to pay into a tree fund. There are ordinances out there, many tree ordinances out there, that actually require you to protect trees. They will not allow you to remove a tree from a site. We didn't feel like that was the correct approach here in Troy. And so, what we are really, this ordinance really is a tree replacement ordinance rather than a tree protection ordinance, and that's very important to remember, is that we are allowing for the removal of trees, but you have to replace with a percentage of the trees that you're removing. So, it does allow flexibility for the development community, and that they can remove trees as part of the development process. So, this is kind of the meat of the ordinance, and this is the only math we'll go over tonight. So, I'll try to make this as easy as possible. The replacement requirement only applies, again, to the protected trees. The first is the landmark trees. Again, those are the big, significant trees. We require replacement, the ordinance is written, it requires a replacement of 100% of the DBH removed. If you remove a, let's just say, 100 inches of landmark tree, you are required to replace with 100 inches of new trees. Woodland trees, which are those clumping or masses of trees, you're only required to replace 50% of what you take out. So, using the 100 inches example, if you remove woodland trees, 100 inches of woodland trees, you're required to replace with 50 inches. Conversely, to incentivize or encourage protection of trees or landmark and woodlands, we do give a 200% credit towards anything that you preserve. Using my 100-inch example, if you preserve 100 inches of landmark or woodland, you get a 200-inch credit towards your removal requirement. So, there will be sites that go through the site plan processes that actually are preserving more trees through their bonus than they are actually taking down, so they actually get extra credit for any trees that they're removing. When we write an ordinance like this, we typically take it through what we call a stress test, essentially, is we try to apply the ordinance to cases going through the Planning Commission approval process to see if the ordinance accomplishes the goals that we're trying to accomplish, but is also fair and equitable to the development community. And we've done that with this ordinance, and we give you two test cases to discuss tonight. One is a commercial site plan, and one is a residential site plan. The commercial site plan is the DMC site located just adjacent to this property that we should all be familiar with. The DMC site was received site plan approval a few years ago, and when they did their tree inventory, they noted that they had 16 landmark trees on site. Of those 16 landmark trees, they were removing eight of them, and they were preserving eight of them. Of the eight that they were removing, there was approximately about 190 inches in total that they were removing. So, as a result, they would have been required to replace 190 inches on site. However, they did preserve eight trees, and those eight trees totaled about 86 inches. So, for the two-to-one credit for replacement of preservation of those trees, excuse me, their total came out to be about 19 inches total when you take the credit versus what was removed. So, in actuality, the applicant was required to replace them with about six additional three-inch trees on site. I will note that we went back and looked at the site plan and landscape plan. They actually had exceeded that replacement requirement even though the ordinance wasn't in place. A more familiar case that we are currently seeing is the residential development. It's kind of washed out in the aerial, but the rear of these properties in red have significant tree cover and woodland cover. And actually, in the tree inventory study of the applicant, they noted 400 trees that were indicated on the tree survey. However, I do want to note, of those 400 trees, only about 150 of them met the qualification of a protected tree. They were either, the other 250 were dead, dying, or diseased, invasive species. They didn't meet the size requirements, et cetera. So, they only had, only identified 150 trees that were actually met the ordinance requirement. Of the 150 trees, they were removing 137 of them. That equaled about 1,000 inches that they would have to replace. With the 50% for woodlands, they only had to replace 500 of them. They were preserving 15. That equals 100 inches, and they get a credit of 200 inches. So, in total, they were required to replace them with about 303 inches, which equals about 101 three-inch trees. I will note that we shared this information with the applicant. This is currently going through the site plan review process. The applicant looked at the numbers and then actually went back and revised their site plan or revised their tree inventory. They actually found additional trees on site to preserve, and so, this number is going to be much closer to zero for replacement than what is shown initially. And I say that with them not having to amend their site plan and not having to lose any lots as a result of applying the ordinance, and that's just one example of how it works. So, in summary, it was our attempt and the Plan of the Commission's attempt to present an ordinance that recognized property rights and recognized development, but also was fair and balanced, and more importantly, was predictable. This really outlines what the development community has expected of them for tree preservation, and so, this is just another item they have to go through the site plan review process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Any questions for staff before I open up the public hearing? Councilman Campbell?
We have about three or four subs that have already been clear cut. They're gone. Those trees are gone. Is this going to, we can't make a retroactive, obviously, but are those subs going to put trees back in? We took a lot of trees out on John R., a lot of trees.
They, the ones that have come through and have clear cut would obviously not be required to meet the ordinance. However, there are landscaping requirements in terms of street trees and buffer trees along major mile roads, so they are only going to have to meet and replace those trees along interior streets and along the buffers, but nothing interior to the lots.
I think that is an important point, that everybody's grandfathered in, if this happened to pass tonight, everybody would be grandfathered in, that has already even presented a plan to the city. Any questions before I open it up? Mayor Protem Pennington?
Brent, you mentioned that recent developments have all been clear cut, and so, that's suggesting that possibly other developments in the past haven't totally clear cut trees? I mean, is that possible?
It's been a mixed bag over time. We have a cluster option that basically allows developers to get the houses a little bit closer, allows us to administratively reduce setbacks to get the houses closer to save trees on the property, and we had a developer that went through the cluster option. So, we've had developers do the cluster option, but we also had clear cutting. We've had everything in between.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Henderson?
In years past, I mean, Troy is not barren of trees, and we have a lot of subdivisions that have plentiful trees. Sylvan Glen is a real good example of that, and it may have been a farmland way back when. My folks moved there in 1976, and there were no trees. You could practically see from 18 to 19 mile, no trees. And if you drive through that subdivision now, plenty of trees. And sure, we fast forward 40 years, and now we have examples of great tree coverage. The people that moved to Troy don't move here because they want to live in a yard that doesn't have any landscaping or foliage. So, isn't it safe to assume that even though they've clear cut in that particular situation that you've shown there, that probably people that move in are going to take care of their own landscaping, plant their own trees? I did a quick inventory of my own yard today. In addition to the trees that were there when we moved in, my wife and I have planted 11 solid, good trees that were probably on your list of quality trees, 36 arborvitae's and 20 shrubs and bushes, and we don't, we aren't dissimilar to many of the homes in our neighborhood. So, I'm just going to leave that comment there as we proceed into the progress here. I don't think that clear cutting a particular area, I don't think it's a great thing. I don't think it's something that's going to devastate the City of Troy. So, just want to leave that comment out there.
Any comments before I open the public hearing? Just my, my sort of rebuttal on that is that most of the people that I talk to in Troy, when they see a subdivision get clear cut, it upsets them, and they don't want to wait 40 years to have the trees back. I've had a lot of comments from the public when they drive down John R. and they see, you know, just flatland, you know, it's just flat, and I think it's disturbing to a lot of people. Any other questions before I open it up? Thank you, guys. I will now open up the public hearing and call on anyone in the audience. I don't see that anyone has signed up to speak on this, but I will open it up to anyone in the audience. Mr. McLeish, please come forward.
I did not. I'm sorry. I did not see you.
It doesn't matter, sir.
I'm fine.
It's okay.
I know.
For public hearings, we offer it to anyone in the audience, so. Good evening. Good evening.
In case a lot of you don't know who we are, we're home builders primarily. We've built in Troy since 1972. We started in, actually Troy Metals, which is even before 1972, but in Sylvan Glen, as Mr. Henderson had mentioned. We have built in all of the major subdivisions in Troy, and I'll just name a few of them. Sylvan Glen, Troy Metals, Oak River, Beach Forest, Vineyards, Adams Point, Charnwood, and a number of other ones where we were not the primary builder, but we built homes there as well. We have never had, one of the problems that you have, if you have a large wood or not, for instance, I know the piece of property that you're talking about, if you leave the tall trees, if they're in a major forest, what happens is, we have a large landscape company, so I know where we speak, because the trees are 40 to 80 feet tall. You leave a few of them there, what you will have happening in a good windstorm is those trees falling over. Now, we built in Beach Forest on the houses, because you've taken away the natural protection of all the trees that are together. If the city wants to have a forested area preserved, then they should buy it instead of taking that piece of property from the homeowner. That's a taking. That's what our country was founded on, that we didn't have to go ask the king whether we wanted to shoot a rabbit to feed our family, or take more than 10% of the corn in order to feed our family. We came to this country so we could grow our crops and take care of it. Anyway, and I, a good home builder, if there's trees on the property, we will preserve them if we can, because we get more money for that particular house with the trees on it, or a lot with the trees on it. Beach Forest is a good example, very large trees. That was the old Miller Farm. Same thing with Oak River. We preserved all the trees that we could, and my own house, I lived there. And one, you can't keep them when they're close to the house, but the problem is, you have to remember, these are large trees with a large root structure, and you only have, say, a 25-foot side yard. Very hard to keep a large tree unless it's near the front of the street, where you have plenty of room for it to grow and maintain itself. Along the sides of the lot lines, you cannot do it.
Mr. McLeish?
Yes.
Allow three minutes.
Can I make one more point?
I will ask to suspend the rules to allow you one more minute, if I can get some support.
Support.
Moved by the chair, supported by Mayor Protem Pennington, that we amend the rules and allow Mr. McLeish one more minute to speak. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pennington?
Yes. Motion passes. We have rules that we have to abide by, so please bear with us.
Okay.
Thank you.
How much time?
One minute.
Okay. Let me ask you this. If you want to build a swimming pool in your backyard, that has to be under site plan approval, so that's going to have to come under that tree ordinance as well. Or if you want to do anything that requires, if you want to put another garage... Or if you want to do anything that requires, if you want to put another garage that's going to, on the back of your lot, that's going to come under site plan approval. So you have to have the approval of this. So all those are going to, you have to take that into all consideration. What we did in our subdivision is we required that the homeowner, when they, in the first year, they had to put two to three lot trees on the lot plus landscape it completely. That was a requirement and they couldn't get around it. Depending, you know, with winter time, we gave them one year to have everything done. You go look at all of our subdivisions, see how many trees we have on them. And those were clear cut. It was farmland when I came here. And go look at the trees. We have 30, 40-foot trees, even on the subdivisions that are only 15 years old. You know, Adams Point, the vineyards. Go just take a look at those and see, we preserve the ones that we can. But I think it's, you're really hamstringing the property owner and the developer and builder. And a good builder will preserve the trees. And I honestly don't think you have to worry about it in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLeish. Yes, sir. Good evening, Kamal.
Good evening.
You'll hear the buzzer go off in three minutes. If you could keep.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I think the trees, I'm so glad that the trees are being worked upon because they're very precious. And as developers, we always like, we think that's a very big attraction to have a lot of trees left. And one way to do it is to modify the cluster option that we have. Because a lot of the land that's left, and I, we own a few of them, there are wetlands, there are obviously trees on them. And if the cluster is modified where we could move, where we could move the, you know, the buildings, and that will necessitate maybe a little bit more density, I think that's the best way that we could work around keeping the trees that are there, that you don't have to really cut it. And I have few properties that, we have a lot of trees on them. And I just want to give you an example, the northwest corner of Wattle's and Crooks. That is in the notes now. And by the way, I really want to thank the city council and the planning commission for doing those notes. Because some of those properties, nobody want to live on those corners. So what you did, I think, was something that is extremely good. I also like to say, though, that some of it didn't go far enough. For instance, I got some restaurants and some gas stations, they want to be on the corner of Wattle's and Crooks. And even though you gave us commercial, we were told that we cannot put that. So I'd just like to be, that thing to be taken into consideration. And I think the cluster is what will save a lot of trees. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Kamal. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item this evening? Yes, please come forward.
Hi, I'm the council people.
Good evening.
I just wanted to speak because when I first discovered Troy, about 1980, it was very green, it was very wooded, there was marshes. And I was an east sider and I thought, boy, this area is beautiful. It's so natural and lovely. And I've lived in Troy for 25 years and I have noticed, when I moved in, it was relatively wooded and natural and beautiful. It was a combination of business and residential. The Big Beaver Corridor was where most of the businesses were at that point. Since then, it's almost, I would say almost fully developed. Mayor, you made a good point when you said the people in the city don't like to see, going down the roads, no trees. There was a development put in close by my home and none of my neighbors wanted the development to put in because it was state-protected wetlands and it was a 10-acre parcel. Somebody had booked garbage in the middle of the contiguous six-acre wet property. A wetlands consultant for the U of M came in and said they were, the soil was wetland soil, there were wetland trees there, there was wetland plants and shrub. Yet, it was almost entirely clear cut. The mound of wood chips were higher than the two-story homes. They smoked for quite some time and they stunk horribly. The basements were dug and they were filled with water and had to be pumped out for quite some time. And that is something that happened. In other areas, I've read things about leaving places relatively untouched, yet they seem to be whittled away and encroachments occur. And I would have to say that either the city of Troy is very serious about preserving what is left or they aren't. Because either a strict ordinance is put in effect, which takes into account not only the natural beauty of the area, which makes Troy a very pleasant and desirable place to live, but also it prevents other things such as, like water, our sewer system, it affects that. And that's why, you know, they get overloaded and sometimes John R. floods out and things like that. I'm assuming that's why, because the wetlands specialist said that.
Thank you. The three minutes is up.
All right. No, thank you. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and return it to the table for resolution and/or discussion. I will move the resolution as printed to get it on the table for discussion.
Support.
Moved by the chair and supported by Councilwoman Abraham that we approve E1, the zoning ordinance text amendment, file number ZOTA 248, the woodland protection as printed. Councilman Henderson?
I made a lot of notes this afternoon. I don't want to go tick by tick, you know, but it would be unproductive to go one question and keep circling back. So, you know, how would you like to approach?
I think we'll give you the chair first and just.
Can I go line by line?
Yeah.
I'll make it quick and.
I don't think we should jump back and forth. So I'm confident you might have the most questions, so maybe we, we'll go with you first, okay?
Okay. So the first note, property rights, and Mr. McLeish kind of hit on this, you know, we, as a people, we generally enjoy our ability to purchase a piece of property and do generally what we would like to do within our ordinances. So I don't understand why we want to put such restraints on a developer that has invested his capital and purchased property in the city of Troy to better our community with good quality housing that people want to come in and move into, where we don't put those same restrictions on single-family homes. And by no means am I suggesting that we want to do that because I don't want, you know, I don't want restrictions on me being able to manipulate the trees in my yard either. But again, we say it's not punitive, but by the very definition, it is very punitive to a builder. Point number two, there's unknown real upfront costs, and I think the one slide was pretty indicative. There were 303 inches, let's call it $200 per tree that somebody would have to replace if he didn't manipulate and get down to zero, which Ben had suggested. You know, that could be 20, 30, 40,000 bucks for a developer to put, you know, more trees or manipulate the tree situation as a worst-case scenario in that one specific situation. And that doesn't cover every possible scenario that we have with available, difficult-to-develop properties in the city of Troy. It doesn't address the situation that really brought this to the forefront of the clear cut property. Because some of the residents that were in the area that abut the property that was clear cut, there is no requirement for a builder to have put trees that would have disguised that property, hid that property from the people that own the adjoining properties. So they would still be looking at the backyards of some houses that may not have any trees because a builder could have put the replacement trees off in another quadrant that doesn't interfere with his development. So I don't think this really addresses that situation thoroughly. Something was brought up this afternoon. Drains are required along the back of those properties. We may not be able to put trees there anyway because they have to put drainage there, tie into the city drains. So that's another consideration. And a builder may simply look at the cost and say, he'll just pay into the fund. And heck with putting trees in or manipulating the property. And, you know, that's certainly a solution, but, you know, again, now we still have that clear cut piece of property, yet all the money is funded and we put more trees on Big Beaver. So it doesn't address the specific situation of a clear cutter, barren piece of property. Another item was brought up this afternoon. We're the Tree City USA, and if I can ask the city manager, how many years running? If we have that information?
I'll defer to Kurt Wolvansee, but was it 25, Kurt?
25.
Good memory.
25 years without a tree ordinance and we are Tree City USA. And I don't anticipate that with or without a new ordinance, and I'm not saying I'm for or against an ordinance of some sort, but I'm saying we have been very good stewards of trees in the city of Troy over the many, many years that the city of Troy has been here. I already talked about the Sylvan Glen situation. There are many subdivisions that mirror that scenario. I spoke with some builders today and I just want to, again, clip down these real quick. These are some of the thoughts that the builders that I spoke with today had brought up. I'll skip over some because they've been covered. One of them indicated he has his eyes on a project right now and he might pull that out of his potential of projects he wants to do if this ordinance passes. Farming may have never occurred in Troy if there was an ordinance way back when and when they started farming, if they couldn't clear cut properties. Because I don't think there were a lot of fields in Troy 200 years ago. It was probably heavily wooded. Tree elevations, this is something that was brought to my attention today. If a tree is below the level of the streets that are put into a subdivision, some of the drainage that comes off naturally from the streets that are put in can cause flooding or excessive water in those areas. Those trees might be in peril anyway in the future. This was covered earlier in conversation. Here's another one. People are moving into the very developments that this ordinance views as inappropriate for the community without hesitation. So we have condominiums that come in, trees are eliminated, the building goes up and these places get filled up with good quality residents in the city of Troy. And then last but not least, let's talk about the cluster because that idea came up earlier today. And, you know, I'm a proponent of, if we're going to fix a problem that may not be a problem, or maybe it is a problem, but if we're going to address it and try to fix it, let's fix all aspects of it rather than just a Band-Aid approach. So if we can, as Mr. Shaib had mentioned, if we can approach a problematic vacant lot that has a lot of trees and maybe streams that go through it, let's fix it so that he can develop it, keep the trees, manipulate the property the way he wants to. And if we can do that by manipulating our cluster situation, then let's do that. But let's do it all at once. Punch a builder here, but give them a little bit here, and, you know, maybe we can have a good product at the end of the day. And that's it. That's all I have. Unless you want more, I can.
I think that's a good start.
All right.
Maybe you can put your thoughts together if you, after you hear some more comments. Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
When we had our meeting at lunch today, and we talked about this for a couple hours, a lot of my questions were answered, but then a lot more questions came up later on. And I just don't think we need to rush into something that, the planning commission may have met on this four or five times, but this is the first time it's come before us. And this is an important issue for residents. You know, I feel for the woman, you know, things have changed in Troy. When my family came to Troy, Rochester Road was a small two-lane road and a friend of my dad's was landing airplanes between Stevenson Highway and I-75. So, you know, things change. Things change and we all hate to see a whole lot of change. But as far as trees go, all I can speak of is experience. We built a house in Rochester Hills on a heavily wooded lot. And when we built this house, we had to take out many mature trees. Two large oaks that were both over 40 inches in diameter. So these were very large trees. But we did save one that, you know, it was against my dad's wishes, but we saved one that was about 50 feet from the house. And this thing was a beautiful oak and it was, I think, when we had to cut it down, it was 38 inches in diameter. But it died within five or six years of us building the house because of the root structure. And we did everything we could to save this tree, but my point is, when you build, it's hard to save mature trees. And if Mr. McLeish is correct, you know, the builders in Troy that we've seen come before us, we hold them responsible for putting in buffers of trees and bushes. And I think what we've seen, you know, people have done a good job. I mean, there could be a road builder and we talk about, you know, this builder that just clear cut a subdivision. So with an important amendment like this, I think we should discuss it more. And my suggestion would be to table it to a later time and do a study session where we meet with, where we all meet together and talk about it.
Are you asking for an amendment to this at this point, or you want further discussion first?
Well, let's finish discussion, then I will put that amendment.
Councilman Baker?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Brent and Ben, for your presentation. It was very insightful and I appreciate all the work you've put into this and to the planning commission as well. I know they've met a lot of times and certainly have thought about a lot of key pieces to this, and it is important for our city. I do feel for the residents that have watched the city change over the years and see the trees get taken out and new developments come in. But I also, I think it is important to think about property rights and remember that if it was your piece of property that you owned and we're all of a sudden told that you couldn't develop it the way you'd been planning when the economy turned around, that, you know, that's not fair to you and it's not necessarily what this country's built on. I agree with a lot of what Councilman Henderson said. I think he raised good points and as well as Mayor Pro Tem Pennington. I also, it's not quite the right time, but would support a further study session because I think it's important that if something is valuable and important to our city, that the city council has an ample opportunity to sit with the planning commission and talk freely back and forth in a certain session. I do think it's important to point out also that we talk a lot on this council and with the city about encouraging developers to come into our city to address things like senior housing, condominium developments, because we have a lot of McMansions that get built throughout the community. And I, it seems to me that the research shows every time we have someone come speak to us, that the best thing to do is not to put in further restrictions and make it more difficult for a developer to build and more expensive, but to try to encourage them to come in. And, you know, I hate clear cutting. It sickens me. I, you know, I have a very personal experience with my father-in-law. I remember, I mean, he was depressed for a week when he saw the property around where his house was built getting clear cut. And it is awful to see. But on that same issue, sometimes it is necessary to provide what a city needs. And we do have residents moving into our city and they love the houses, even they don't have all the old trees around them. And again, if we're looking at things like senior housing and condominium projects, which we desperately need in the city, unfortunately, it may be necessary to clear cut to provide that kind of structure and that kind of development. And I'm certain that with the right developers, as Mayor Pro Tem said, they would work with us to make sure that we could still preserve the beauty of the city, continue with our Tree City awards and keep the charm of the city with what we have in all the trees. My last point on this is that, you know, I think that if the goal is to get rid of clear cutting in the city, which is what concerns most people, this ordinance doesn't actually do that. And I'm not suggesting we make something stricter that outright prohibits it, but this doesn't actually solve that problem. The presentation itself explains that, you know, you could still clear cut and just pay into a fund. And that's not going to ultimately solve the problem, in my opinion. So I would support a further study session. I think some great points were raised. I love the trees in Troy as well, so it's difficult for me. But I also believe that personal property rights are very important to every citizen. to every citizen, and I think that that's something we need to look at.
Thank you. Okay, Councilwoman Abraham.
In recent months, Mayor, this council and previous councils have really taken the character of neighborhoods into account when making decisions. You know, two things that come to the top of my mind was Tucker Street, and whether or not to remove the barriers, whether it should be paved. And a lot of consideration was put into what the residents wanted, because either of those changes, or both of those changes, would significantly impact the character of their neighborhood and their experience. Another instance that came up recently was the Trails and Pathways, and, you know, some of the neighbors were, you know, maybe not satisfied with how their neighborhood and their experience would be impacted. And we took that into consideration. I hear all the time from residents about clear-cutting. And maybe I hear about it more, because I live off of John R., and I've seen how much clear-cutting has gone on in just the two-mile stretch between 17-Mile and 19-Mile. Where there were woodlands, where there were huge trees, gone. Have there been some replacements? Some, but probably nowhere in comparison to what had been there. And it certainly has changed the character of the neighborhood and our life experiences. And I think we need to be very mindful of that. You know, Mr. McLeish and Mr. Shaheeb, you know, they've indicated, you know, they've been builders for a while, and done a lot in the city of Troy, and both of them have said, you know, good builders will keep the trees, because it makes the property more valuable. I'm not sure every developer has the same standards that you two have, because not all of them do that. And I think we do need to really listen to the residents who are saying consistently that this isn't acceptable to them. Again, I see this every day, driving to and from work, and I can remember what it was like. And it wasn't all that long ago that they were there. It's been within the past five years.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilwoman Hoderick?
I've been following this for years. This discussion about our trees, clear-cutting, has gone on for a long time. The discussion was tabled for a while. I've watched the Planning Commission discussions, and followed it in detail. Mr. McLeish, you do, you do, I know, because I have friends that have built, you do heed the importance of trees in your subdivisions, but what about the builder that doesn't? There are property rights of the person with that property, and what they do with their trees. But what we're hearing from, and we've heard loudly from people, you get grabbed in Kroger when you're trying to run in for milk. Please, what's going on with the very little bit of land we have left? And in essence, while that, while those people may not own that piece of property, they own this one, and that change over here is impacting their property, their quality of life, what they see each and every day. I feel satisfied that the Planning Commission has worked this through. I've watched them painstakingly. I watch the meetings. I go back and look at them. It's been very thoughtful. My sense is that the plan that has come through, and what I have watched happen, is that flexibility to a builder. If, in the end, the right answer is that they do clear-cut, we can at least say we're investing in trees elsewhere. There's some mitigation to just the sincere loss that people feel. Troy has had a place where there's very little undeveloped land left. And as a current leadership, I think we need to look at the here and now. You know, 40 years ago might have been different, but the here and now is protecting that preciousness that we have, and hoping that the best builders come forward and work with us. It's that balance of rights on both sides, and it's the balance of the rights of the community already here. I guess we could go forward with another study session, but I really want to applaud the Planning Commission and the work that's been done, and appreciate that we've gotten to this point. I think it's a quality piece that balances it all out.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a few comments. I, if I could get Brent to come back up and, could you put the first slide up that talks about what our goal is really here?
This one?
Yes. You know, it's hard to read with the yellow there. You might want to think of a different color the next time. But...
Just for the record, we changed colors a couple of times on that slide.
I think I liked the one before this. You know, there's been some discussion up here, you know, what the real goal is. And I look at what the Planning Commission did here, and staff worked in conjunction, to try to come to a compromise between both developers and the public. And I share the same info as Councilwoman Hoderick, that I've been listening to this issue for five years, at least. This isn't a new issue. It's been on the table before, and it's been tabled, and it's been tabled, and it's been tabled, and it's been tabled. And I usually support a request from another council member to, you know, if they need more time to look at an issue. But personally, if you've watched the Planning Commission meetings, if you've read their minutes, I don't know what else we can discuss here that would persuade one way or the other. I think if you have all the information today that you would get if we had another study session, in my opinion. So if you could fast-forward to this slide that talks about, and I also share what Councilwoman Hoderick said about Mr. McLeish. If every developer was like Mr. McLeish, we wouldn't be here today. Okay? There's no doubt in my mind. We wouldn't be here today.
Which slide, Mr. Mayor, would you like?
The one that, you know, we're not telling developers that they must remove the trees, you know? And I think that's important. You know, if a developer chooses to come into that site and take a tree down that we would like to see stay there, he can do that. We're not prohibiting a developer from taking down trees if he chooses to. What we're asking is that if you're going to take trees down, that you replace them somewhere on the site. And I don't think that's unreasonable. Okay? I understand that there are trees that you have to move. And this isn't going to be a perfect ordinance. It's not going to be an all-inclusive. But I think there's been some extremely hard work done on this to try to find a balance. And I think the one I was looking for was, weren't we talking about finding a balance on the first slide?
Sure.
Somewhere?
Yeah.
But that's what we were trying to accomplish here with this ordinance, is to find a balance between the two. And we can go back, and we can talk about this again, I think, for another week. And I really don't think anybody's going to change their opinions. I think we have enough data, we have enough information, that this council should just move forward and vote yes or no on this issue. So I really don't think we need to table this, in my opinion. And I do think that the cluster issue is very important. And I was told by the Planning Commission today, and by staff, that if this gets approved tonight, Planning Commission will be working immediately on the cluster issue. Okay? So it's not that important to me that they both have to be done together, but it is important to me that this is step one, and cluster is step two. Okay? So that is important to me, and I think we can do it in steps. I really do. So I have to say that I hear more from citizens about clear-cut than any issue going on in the city right now. I really do. And I think what we're trying to accomplish here is a balance between trying to do that and still preserving the rights of a developer. Okay? That developer, in my opinion, with this ordinance, can still do whatever he wants to do. Am I correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
There's options there.
He can do whatever he wants to do on that site.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The concern of the Planning Commission was to not negatively impact the number of the development potential of the properties based on units. In other words, if there's a landmark tree, some communities, like, for example, Bloomfield Township or Ann Arbor, you cannot touch the tree under any circumstances. So you've got to circumvent the road around the tree, and it affects how many units you can get. This ordinance does not do that. It is not that punitive. It allows for flexibility and options.
City Manager Kishnik, is this a recommendation from staff also?
I don't see it as a recommendation from staff. It's a recommendation from the Planning Commission on a 7-0 vote.
Thank you.
We would say that we have heard a lot of comments about clear-cutting, and how do you address that. It does have a provision that's been downplayed very significantly by many people, to pay into a fund as a resort. And that means the city would have trees put up in parks, which I'm not so sure that we want. And I want to make sure that that's clear, unless I'm wrong.
No, you're absolutely correct. The intent was, I'll put that slide back up if I may, Mr. Mayor? This, Councilman Baker referred to this provision. That is a good catch by you, Councilman. But I want to really stress that this is a tiered system, and this is an order of preference. So first and foremost, number one, the Planning Commission wishes to protect and preserve existing trees, and they do that by incentivizing, as we talked about, the two-for-one. If trees cannot be preserved, the second tier is replacing trees that are removed. And the third option is paying into a tree fund. So option three is something that would only be entered into if the developer, based on the characteristics of the site, was unable to plant trees, enough trees on the site. So the 100-inch example that Mr. Carlisle gave, for example, if the developer, for whatever reason, can only plant 80 inches of trees onsite, they could pay into a tree fund as a last resort for those extra 20 inches. That's where that is coming, what that means. The intent is not to clear-cut, stroke a check, plant all the trees elsewhere. That's not the intent.
I know it's not the intent, and I know that you can't cover every single possibility when you try to do something like this, unless you do something like Ann Arbor did. So, you know, there, I think there has to be a tier. I guess my question to Mr. Kishnik is, if that, if they decide to put money into a tree fund, is that, we could use that fund for replacement of trees in the city also, that we currently are taking out of budget?
I would just explain to you, I don't see any regulations on how paying into the tree fund as a third tier was ever considered, ever discussed, ever contemplated. It was simply a third tier to pay into a fund, so that you could get the development going, and trees would be planted. There's no criteria on how we would do it. It could be, what I've, you know, internally, we've talked a lot about planting them in parks, or planting them using the money for street trees. So we do, we do have the street tree replacement program that's going. That potentially could be used for that. But I've not, I've not seen that criteria written anywhere. I've not seen any discussion on that. Am I wrong,
No. In the tree ordinance, there is no, the third tier is paying a tree fund. It doesn't, in the order, dictate how the use of that tree fund money is used for replacement of trees, or where you plant them within the city. All it states is that the tree fund shall be used to plant trees on public property.
So I can't... So we could use it to replace trees?
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
I'd like to make another comment, and then have another question also. In our two-hour meeting earlier, we talked about, another topic that was brought up was a possible cap. A cap, was that discussed further? You know, I had to leave for work. Was that discussed further after I left? Possible cap per project, or cap per acre?
I don't know if it was discussed after you left.
I don't think it was discussed much after you left. Most of the discussion centered around it being very cumbersome to regulate, and the formula, it would take some time to create a formula of some kind. It would have to be almost per acre, you know?
Right.
You know, from the sounds of it, it sounded very cumbersome to move forward.
One thing that wasn't brought up, that just was brought to my attention just now, was that we currently are designated a Tree City. As of this year, we are...
I think, Kurt, let's let Mr. Bovinsy talk about the Tree City USA. I know it's a longstanding award that the city receives. Good evening, Kurt.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are a Tree City USA for the 25th year, consecutive years. Tree City USA is sponsored by the Arbor Day Foundation. It is a criteria that you have to meet. It's how much you invest into your urban forest per capita. So what it takes into account, it takes into account if you have a tree replacement program, a tree trimming program, you have an arborist, if you have a tree ordinance, which is our current Chapter 28, which does regulate some trees. And we also have a Parks and Recreation Advisory Board that takes the role of a tree board, if you will, since they oversee the Parks and Recreation departments.
So in your opinion, with this designation, does it seem like we've been doing the right thing over the years?
In regards to...
Tree preservation and...
In the eyes of the Arbor Day Foundation, we, you know, our ordinance does have very limited tree protection in that ordinance. In their eyes, it qualifies us to become a Tree City USA.
If we had a better ordinance, we could get a better star, though, couldn't we?
There is, there is opportunity for gold stars, if you will, at one time, if you do make a considerable contribution to your urban forest. Like a woodland protection ordinance, I think we would be applying for that gold star, if you will, to, because it is a significant contribution to the urban forest.
Personally, don't think that we should be making ordinance decisions based on getting stars and being a Tree City, personally. Councilman Henderson?
Two points. One, I'll piggyback out of the Tree City USA. Will we have our designation stripped from us if we don't produce a, an ordinance of this?
The application is due December 31st of a year, every year. So the application was submitted this past December, and we met the per capita. We well exceeded the per capita amount spent per constituent. So without this ordinance passed, as long as the funding continues with the tree trimming and the tree planting, I don't see any reason why it would limit our chances to become Tree City USA.
And the follow-up to that is the, not specifically to that, but the costs, and I'm glad Mayor Pro Tem Pennington brought this up, but the cap discussion that we've had. And I know it's cumbersome, and it's awkward, and it's difficult to put a cap on, or to know, you know, what those costs might be, even to present ourselves with some sort of a cap. But it's equally as difficult for the owner of a 10-acre parcel with a bunch of trees on it to determine what those costs are for his development. So when you have people like Mr. McLeish and Mr. Shaheeb that come into town, and they buy these parcels of property, and they want to develop them, and we can't even, as a city, determine whether a $10,000 cap or $100,000 cap is appropriate, how are they supposed to know on their development, you know, how this is going to impact them financially? And I think that's a strong consideration. And one of the reasons why I think that the building community needs to be involved somehow, some way, in our discussions, if we table this and move on to a discussion, in those discussions, they need a seat at that table. discussions, they need a seat at that table.
Any other further discussion? I'm sorry, Mr. McLeish, our rules. Oh, Mr. McLeish, please. Mr. McLeish, please, please. Our rules do not allow for it.
I just have one more question for Brent before we go.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you. Brent, can you go back to the slide with the, your opening slide with the scale on So, one of the points on the right is protection of property values. Is it possible that if this ordinance is passed as is, it could negatively affect property values if they have to sell a parcel that has wooded trees on it?
That's probably a question for our Assessor Nino Lucari. I'm not comfortable answering this question.
In your opinion, would you think it would possibly affect that negatively?
I would defer to Nino on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Baker?
I just, I've been sitting here thinking and listening and great comments by everybody, as always. But I, we're being asked to approve an ordinance that has language regarding a city tree fund that doesn't exist, and that concerns me. And I don't know if the city attorney, I mean, she's reviewed the ordinance as well, but I'm generally opposed to approving something that has language in there that we don't know what it means. And I think that all citizens would be equally concerned about that regardless of what, it's a tree ordinance or something else, but we're being asked to approve something that is...
I'll defer to the city attorney, but I don't think that's what I...
Could I please answer first, if you wouldn't, because I was the one who made the comment. I didn't say we don't have a tree fund. We absolutely have a tree fund. What we don't have is a criteria on this particular pay into the fund, to your point. You know, we would have to develop that. And as the city attorney and I, and she can tell you, we're just reading, you know, there's, it's on public property.
City Attorney Bloom?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. It is in F3 and it does, basically, it's the Planning Commission that gets to decide. I mean, they're presented with the unique circumstances of each property development and then they decide if they can do the preservation or if not, then it would go to the replacement. And then lastly, the last resort would be the deposit. And it does say in the ordinance in three, it says that the, if the Planning Commission permits the applicant to plant off-site, the applicant shall be required to pay the equivalent fee of the cost of the tree replacement, including the cost of installation, to the city tree fund. The city tree fund shall be used to plant trees on public property. So, that is what the ordinance that is proposed does provide for.
So, we could use it in the replacement of trees?
It is on public property, yes.
On public property, okay. Any questions further? Councilman Campbell?
Just got one. I appreciate all the work that you guys did, but it seems like we're trying to put something through that, at the end of the day, is really of no value. And we're Tree City now, you know, we're not penalizing the builders, we're not beating them with it. So, I guess at the end of the day, I'm not sure what this does for the city. I don't, maybe I'm missing something, but it doesn't seem like we're really doing a lot to stop clear cutting. We're not, we're not going to penalize the builders for clear cutting and everything else is, you know, you don't have to do this, you don't have to do that, we can't force you to do that. So, I guess I'm a little confused about what the value of the bill really is.
Is that a question for Brent or?
Yeah, or anybody else that knows the answer? Sure.
I'll go back to the first slide. This was initiated by the Planning Commission. And what really triggered this was that we've got a lot of recent developments, particularly residential developments, where the sites are being clear cut. We've listened to residents express their concerns. And as a result, the Planning Commission initiated this, but they did not want to take a heavy-handed approach and be really punitive, and they wanted to be flexible and allow for options. And I don't know if I've answered your question or not, Mr. Campbell.
I think it's going to be the same question back, actually. So, it really doesn't have a lot of teeth to do anything.
It tries to incentivize a developer.
How does it incentivize the developer?
Could I? I would say it is, it is a provision of the zoning ordinance, so it does have teeth insofar as that it is enforceable. But it is not a heavy-handed approach that requires tree preservation. It incentivizes it by providing a bonus. And any development that comes in has to adhere to these standards. So, it does have teeth and it will be enforced. So, to say that it's unenforceable, I would disagree. But it's, again, it's not, it's not a heavy-handed approach. It's not, it's not a one-size-fits-all. I want to, I want to be clear. What we did not do, there's a lot of ordinances out there, we mentioned some earlier this evening, Ann Arbor and Bloomfield Township, we did not cookie cutter any other provisions. We started from scratch on these to address this situation. And that was, that was the approach we took. So, it's, it's almost impossible to compare because it's just a different approach altogether.
Councilman Henderson?
I don't want to wear anybody out, but the, it's a pretty valid point. If a builder, let's say he's got $50,000 worth of tree or $10,000, whatever that is, this conversation came up earlier as well, let's say it's going to cost him $50,000 because he needs to clear cut or wants to clear cut or whatever the reason is that that property gets clear cut and he has to pay that. Now, that money gets spread across 30 lots throughout this development that he's, so the end user, the person that's going to move here to Troy, ends up paying that money anyway. The builder's not going to eat that and absorb it. So, if that happens, we still have not corrected the problem. It's a parcel that's going to be clear cut. We haven't, we haven't really come up with a solution. And again, I applaud your efforts on this because I know it's painstakingly difficult to try to come up with language to put into an ordinance like this, something this large and potentially this controversial. But again, it, to Councilman Campbell's point, really doesn't fix the problem. It just spreads more cost out to the guy that's invested in our community in line of a builder. And it will give, given to the end user and we still will probably have clear-cut properties. So, and to your point about giving a bonus, it's not really a bonus when you charge somebody, but then we're going to give you a credit back. That's a backwards bonus. It doesn't, it doesn't play as a bonus to me. A bonus would be, A, if you save these trees, we'll give you $50,000 bucks. That's a bonus. But that's not going to happen either, so.
Any further discussion? I, you know, the arguments that you try to make on those points, you can't have it both ways, okay? You know, you can't have a tree ordinance that doesn't have enough teeth and then be against one that has teeth. You know, I mean, you know, this is just trying to find the balance. You can't have an ordinance, I mean, be against an ordinance that's a little more forgiving and then say, well, I don't want to make it any more restrictive. It's just, I don't see how you can have it both ways.
That wasn't necessarily my point.
But it sounded like it. Any other discussion? Mayor Pro Tem Pennington, did you want to try and move a resolution to table this at this point?
I just think it needs further discussion. So, you know, I appreciate Brent's hard work on it and I would be voting no if we do not table it, but that would be my, I would like to move an amendment to table this for further time until after we had a planning session on it. I'm not against the ordinance. I just think we need to, I think it needs more, a little bit more fine tuning, a little bit more work.
Is there a second?
Second.
Well, Mayor Pro Tem Pennington, and supported by Councilman Henderson, that we table this item until after a study session to talk further about this issue. Discussion.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Hoderick?
Typically, I would want to support something like that. This has been tabled and tabled and discussed and thrown around this community. I think it's time for us to make a decision. And there is no perfect answer to this. We can argue ourselves into different corners. There's no perfect solution. This has been a very well-discussed, well-vetted idea that's brought to us. I think we should vote yea or nay on it and move on.
I'll remove my suggestion and just, we'll just put it to a vote.
Is that okay, Ms. Dixon?
No.
Do we have to act on that now?
Yes.
The, yeah, the postponement has to be voted on.
Any further discussion on the postponement? Councilman Henderson?
To Councilwoman Hoderick's point, we, you know, we've, you can watch all the Planning Commission meetings you want, you can, you can read all the documentation you want, but I personally, this is the first time that I've been able to interject conversation into this topic. So, for us to just be handed this without any kind of input and maybe a new set of eyes, which is what we're elected to do, is have a set of eyes for all constituents, not just residents, builders and whatnot. Again, you know, a study session is an important process, especially if we have an opportunity to discuss further things like clusters, caps and those kind of things that could become the perfect situation or much better situation than this. Again, not discounting the work that the Planning Commission put into it or what Mr. Savinat's put into it, but there's always another way to get to a little bit better resolution than where we're at right now. Because this, again, bringing Councilman Campbell's comments, really doesn't have the teeth that it needs. And I'm not, I'm not advocating that we need more teeth because I'd like to see this thing go away. But if you really want a solution to fix clear cutting, this is not it. This certainly doesn't address all the situations that need to be addressed.
Any other discussion on the postponement?
Sir? Yeah, I've got another comment. We had a, go ahead, thank you. We had a, now that we bring this up, we had a study session on fracking here a while ago. And I don't think fracking is going to be an issue in Troy in my lifetime and probably not my children's lifetime, but we're not going to have a study session on an important issue like this. So, you know, that just irks me. That's it.
I will just piggyback on Councilwoman Hoderick that I think it's time to make a decision on this issue. The vote on the postponement, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Abraham?
No.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
No.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
No. Motion fails. The vote on the ordinance, E1.
Councilmember Baker?
No.
Councilmember Campbell?
No.
Councilmember Henderson?
No.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
No.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Motion fails. Thank you for all of the work, gentlemen, and the Planning Commission. Next on the agenda is E2, a street vacation request, SV191, which is an alley east of John R. between Gabriel and Vermont, abutting parcel 2020 Gabriel on the east and vacant parcel 88-20-25-309-002 on the west, Section 25. Currently zoned R1E.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
As you indicated, Mr. Mayor, this is a little general location map showing where the property is located. It's east of John R., north of Maple Road. Zooming in on the property, we see this rectangular piece here, it's the, the portion of alleyway that we're talking about this evening. It's 10 by 40, it's 400 square feet. It is abutting a vacant parcel that's 40 by 100 feet in size. And the reason the applicant seeks this vacation is they will use that property to expand the size of the lot and build a larger building footprint for a single-family home. This is the 100 by 40 square foot lot and that's the alley, the half of an alley. The full alley is 20 feet in area. Here's the original plat, platted in 1925, Sussex Park subdivision. And it's not, it's not very clear. They didn't have very good AutoCAD back then. But here's the alleyway. Again, it's 20 feet in width, goes for the entire subdivision. And going back to the slide, notice, so here you see the orange property lines in here. You notice, actually, it doesn't show up on the screen, but today, this 20-foot alleyway is there in its entirety. But when you go north, you see here, 10 feet of it has been vacated. If you, it's off the screen, but the lot to the north, the entire alleyway's been vacated. The lot north of that, 10 feet's been vacated. So, it's been kind of a hodgepodge over the years of vacations. And the reason for that is, is street vacations in Troy are application-driven. We respond to applications and we bring them forward to Planning Commission and City Council on a case-by-case basis. So, that's what has happened over time. In this case, the benefit for the vacation is a larger building footprint for a potential single-family home. There are underground and overhead utilities in that alleyway, so the city will have to retain easements. What this basically gives them, it pushes their required setback 10 feet to the east and allows a larger building on the site. There will be no structures or buildings permitted in the easement. And the Planning Commission considered this at a public hearing. There was no one in attendance who commented. I did receive a number of phone calls from neighbors who received either a postcard in the mail or they saw the sign that we put up, wondering what was going on. And I'd say probably 2/3 of the people that called me had no idea there was even an alley there. I can answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Brent from Council? Thank you, Brent. I will open this public hearing and is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item this evening? Yes, ma'am, please come forward. Give us your name.
Hi, Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening. So, I guess I don't understand the whole thing. It's the existing homeowner that wants to, is that correct? Is that how I understand it? That the current homeowner that's in front of that alleyway wants this land? Is that what we're doing here?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, I have no other questions. I just want to clarify that was exactly what they wanted. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this item? I will close the public hearing, return it to the table for a resolution and discussion. Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move E2 as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilwoman Abraham, that we approve E2 as printed in the document. Discussion. Councilman Henderson?
Can we now address the speaker, just to give her more detail on that vacation as we know it? Or, I'm not sure that we answered all of her questions necessarily, but maybe I can just speak on it a little bit.
Our rules don't really allow for a discussion with the resident, but you're welcome to say whatever you want.
Okay, that, vacation on that is for the specific piece of property. We also talked about expanding that in the past into other properties. Why don't we just make it a blanket vacation for all of those? And we just act on a per-request basis.
Any other discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Motion passes. E3 is a public hearing for the adoption of property assessed clean energy, which is PACE program with an introduction by Glenn Lapin, our economic development specialist. Good evening again.
Good evening once again. City Council approved a resolution of intent at its January 25, 2016 meeting. And today's public hearing considers adoption of the property assessed clean energy program or PACE. PACE is a financing mechanism that encourages energy efficiency and renewable energy measures in commercial and industrial properties. Through a property special assessment process, PACE enables up to 100% financing, 15- to 20-year terms, and positive cash flow for the life of the project by enforcing payment on the financing. If the borrower defaults on a loan payment, the local unit of government enables a lien to be placed on the property through a special assessment. And it is that special assessment lien that provides the mechanism for enforcing eventual repayment to the lender. In an environment of limited state and local economic development... In an environment of limited state and local economic development tools available to encourage property owners to improve properties, the PACE program offers an innovative financing mechanism at no direct cost to the city or its taxpayers. From an economic development standpoint, the PACE program helps to increase property values, expands the tax base, makes properties more marketable for today's energy-conscious users, and improves owner-tenant satisfaction. Heller Machine Tools, a longtime major Troy company, is currently planning energy improvement to its facility on Equity Drive. The PACE program will be of assistance to Heller and other Troy companies that wish to take advantage of the program. Other companies have been inquiring about this as of late. Local government approval is required by state legislation in order to implement the PACE program, and tonight's public hearing is a step in this process. This evening with us tonight is Corey Conley from Love &amp; Energy Partners, is available to answer any questions, along with representatives from ABN Building Solutions and Heller Machine Tools as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Any questions for staff before I open the public hearing? Thank you, Glenn. Open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item this evening. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, return it to the table for resolution. Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
I'd like to move E3, the adoption of the PACE program, property assessed clean energy as printed.
Second. Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Pennington, supported by Councilman Campbell, that we adopt the property assessed clean energy, better known as PACE, program as printed in the document this evening. Discussion. I think we've discussed this enough, and we're ready to move forward. Thank you to everyone that worked on this. I think it's a good thing for the city. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Good luck, and thank you to Heller for committing to reinvest in our city. Thank you. I don't see that anyone has signed up to speak on public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. There are no postponed items. Does anyone need a break before regular business this evening? Take a five-minute break, we'll be back at 9:30. We are back in session. Next on the agenda is regular business, I1, board and committee appointments. I have mayoral appointments this evening. I will move to appoint the following nominated persons. James Hatch for the Board of Review for the term that expires 1/31/2019, and myself for the LDFA appointment as an alternate with the term that expires 11/11/2019.
Support.
Moved by the chair, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Pennington, that we appoint James Hatch for the Board of Review, and myself for the LDFA, as indicated in the packet. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. There are no city council appointments this evening?
I'm sorry, there is... Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Next is I2, board and committee nominations. There are no mayoral nominations this evening, but I will defer to Mayor Pro Tem Pennington for city council nomination.
Yes, we have one nomination for the zoning Board of Appeals for the term expiring 12/31/16, Philip Zanzika.
Support. Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Pennington, supported by Councilman Henderson, that we nominate Philip Zanzika as the Planning Commission Rep. to the ZBA for the term that expires Ms. Dixon?
I just wanted to clarify, this is just a confirmation of the Planning Commission's appointment of Mr. Zanzika as the PC rep. to the ZBA. So it doesn't need to come back, it's just a confirmation of their already, what they've already done.
Okay. As indicated by Ms. Dixon. Discussion on that.
Mayor, I do think, I think that you do need to have an appointment. You certainly have the Planning Commission's recommendation there, but I think, Mayor, that this is one where just to err on the side of caution, that you should follow your normal process for the appointments.
So instead of a nomination, we'll make that an appointment?
This is...
Okay.
This is going to be a nomination. That's what she's saying, what Ms. Bloom is saying, is that this is a nomination, and so it will come back next week as the appointment.
All right.
We'll say caution and do a nomination. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, I3, there is no closed session request this evening, so we will move to I4, a master plan update distribution of the draft master plan. Good evening again, Brent and Ben.
Good evening, the dynamic duo is back, Mr. Mayor.
Good luck. Good luck.
And if I mention trees at any point, you just elbow me really hard, okay?
It's a little easier than the last item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as the city council is aware, the Planning Commission has completed a number of amendments to the city of Troy master plan. These amendments were incorporated into a draft document that has been presented to you this evening, 300 and some pages of very eloquently, eloquent material. The requirements for a master plan are described in the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, and in terms of adopting that document, the next step in the master plan process is for city council to approve the distribution of that plan. And the act requires that the plan be distributed to a number of organizations, and I'll list just a few of them. The planning commissions of all municipalities that are contiguous to the city of Troy, the Oakland County Road Commission, the Michigan Department of Transportation, and the Oakland County Planning Commission, just to name a few. Each of these entities will have, once it's distributed, will have 63 days to review the plan. Not 60, not 65, but 63 days to review the plan. Following this 63-day review period, the Planning Commission is required to have a public hearing on the draft master plan. Now, I need to stress that city council has the ultimate authority to approve the master plan unless city council defers the authority to the Planning Commission. The document, the 2008 master plan document that is the policy document today for the city of Troy, when it was adopted in 2008, that authority was deferred to the Planning Commission. We don't have to make that determination this evening, we can consider that after the review period. It seems to me that it would be a good idea, given the cooperation that the city council has with the Planning Commission, it would seem to me that would be a good idea to, for the city council, to take responsibility, take the authority, and approve the plan, but that's a decision you can make in a little more than 63 days. Thank you.
Thank you. Question is from council for staff. This is just a distribution of the master plan, and my understanding is if council reads it and has some issues with it, that this will be going back to the Planning Commission with input from various parts, and then once it comes back to us, then we will have an opportunity to give input into the master plan.
We certainly welcome your input at any time, but this document theoretically could change if any of the, if any of the organizations that we send it to have any significant changes and the Planning Commission feels that they're appropriate. It could be different than what you see today.
Right. Councilman Henderson?
If council has recommendations or input, we need to direct that as a body, so at what point during that 63-day period of time do we get together to do that? That's kind of an open question, or do we?
I asked that question earlier, and it's best to wait until the Planning Commission's period of time has expired and they get all of the possible input from residents and anyone else, and then, once that's done, it will come to us. We'll look at it. If we choose to make some suggestions, we do that, and then it will go back to the Planning Commission at that point.
Follow-up to that, then, so we'll have a study session of some sort to go over the... It's a pretty lengthy document naturally, and this is the first time most of us, if not all of us, have had any kind of participation in that.
I think a study session on this document is, it's one of the more important documents that the city of Troy will have. I think a study session is absolutely appropriate.
Mayor?
City Attorney Bloom?
One of the things that you may want to do is you may want to be sure that that's put in there, that there will be a study session for city council prior to the Planning Commission acting on it. You certainly could amend the resolution to very specifically state that if you so desired.
Thank you. I don't know about other members of council, but I would like to see that in there. I think we should have a study session. We need to vote on an amendment, Ms. Dixon?
There hasn't been a motion, then.
I'm making a motion to amend I4 to include a study session after the Planning Commission meets after 63 days.
Support.
Ms. Dixon?
I just want to be clear that, are you postponing this motion to that? You're just amending, okay.
Moved by the chair, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Pennington, that we approve I4 as printed with the amendment.
Mayor, I'm sorry, may I just clarify what the motion is? Then the motion to amend, would be to amend to add language that provides that the city council shall have a study session after the Planning Commission review period of 63 days before the Planning Commission takes any final action.
Correct.
Thank you.
Discussion on that. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was easy. I-5 is a standard purchasing resolution number four and budget amendment for the youth story and craft room renovation at the Troy Public Library. And thank you to Kathy Russ for hanging around for this. Good evening again.
Thank you for having me, and I hope this is an easy one for you. In May 2015, the estate of Lucille Makarov made an extremely generous donation to the Troy Public Library. We presented that to City Council in July of 2015. We took you on a tour last month and showed you where the work would be done in the youth services story room and craft room, and it's very exciting, we're about to start the work. What we realized, though, that the, because the revenue, or excuse me, the donation was accepted last fiscal year after this current fiscal year's budget was approved, we need to have a budget amendment in order to make things right with our current year's budget.
Thank you. Questions from Council for Kathy? Thank you. Councilman Henderson?
Move I-5 as printed?
Support.
Moved by, Councilman Henderson, and supported by Councilwoman Abraham, that we approve I-5 as printed in the agenda packet this evening. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. I-6 is a standard purchasing resolution number four and budget amendment for the new meeting room furniture for the Troy Public Library purchased by Friends of the Troy Public Library. Good evening again, Kathy.
Hello again. I hope another easy one. We're very fortunate, we have some, our Friends of the Library are extremely generous, and they have offered to purchase new meeting room furniture for the Library's large meeting room. The furniture that's currently in the room is about 20 years old, it's no longer functional, and it's basically wearing out. So the Friends have offered to replace that furniture for us to, at a cost to not exceed $47,000. They are going to pay that directly, and we will be able to choose what we like, but we need to have a budget amendment to reflect the donation and recognize the donation within our current budget.
Thank you. Questions for Kathy? Thank you, Kathy.
I'll move the resolution. I-6, standard purchasing resolution number four, budget amendment, new meeting room furniture for the Troy Public Library purchased by the Friends of the Troy Public Library.
Thank you. Moved by Councilwoman Abraham, supported by Councilman Campbell, that we approve I-6 as printed in the agenda packet and read. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Kathy. Next is the consent agenda. Has anyone wished to pull in a consent agenda item this evening? Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move all items on the consent agenda as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilman Baker, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as printed in the agenda packet this evening. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Motion passes. If you're hearing a consent agenda item this evening, they've all been approved. Next are memorandums and future council agenda items. There are none this evening. So we will move to public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. And I will call on Mr. Savage, Troy resident.
Good evening, Mayor Slater, and good evening, Council staff. I read in the local newspaper that later this month, the council will be having a retreat to consider the Civic Center area and plans for the Civic Center area. And as I recall, this Civic Center area has been studied many times before. About 12, maybe 13 years ago, a task force was commissioned by the council to formulate a plan for the Civic Center area. The task force was made up of members from different segments of the community. I was not a member of that task force, but as I recall, the members included residents, council members, DTE, management, Troy Chamber of Commerce, and I think there was many others. I'm not sure the makeup, I think there was something like a dozen or more people that formed this committee, and they studied for six months. And it was headed by Mr. Brian Waddles, who is a descendant of one of our city founders. When the plan was presented to council, it was applauded by everyone in this crowded room, and it was a crowded room, I was there. Mr. Waddles and the task force received glowing praise and thanks for their time and effort. Prior to that time, Troy residents voted four to one against a city proposal for that site. So when the council and management, residents unanimously embraced the site plan, it was a show of unity that Troy had not seen before or since. So I'm wondering what happened? Here we are, again, studying the same site. So the question now is, do we intend to develop the site, or do we want to just keep talking about it? I might also add that when you view this plan, you will note that the center of the attraction is the beautiful community center ballroom. So I would urge you all to, before you talk about this site, consider this, I don't know whether anybody remembers the site, but it was, it was just beautiful. And one of the areas in the site was a skating rink. I was in Detroit Christmas Day.
Mr. Savage, the three minutes is up. Could you just wrap it up real quick, then?
Christmas Day, I was in downtown Detroit. It was deserted. There was not a soul anywhere. The people wasn't moving, was not moving. The only people I saw as I drove through Detroit was probably about 20 or 30 people on the skating rink in Cambridge Marshes. It was a big attraction. I hope you will consider this, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Savage. Anyone on Council or staff wish to rebut or comment on Mr. Savage's comments? City Manager Kishnik?
I would just say, Mr. Savage, we appreciate you bringing that plan up, and certainly we will look at it. And this is, the question was, I think, posed, do we want to just talk about this or do something? I think we want to talk about it and see what can be done.
I agree, and that discussion in the retreat is just a small portion of what we're going to talk about for two days, but I think there are many in the community that think it's time to revisit after 12 years, that the timing might be better. So I think it is a good time to start the talking again. There are no council referrals this evening, so we will move to council comments. Are there any comments from council this evening? None? Any comments on the reports that were in the packet this evening? There is, in my opinion, an important report that would be P-2A, the I-75 phase reconstruction of I-75 from north of Coolidge to north of South Boulevard. I would encourage everyone to read that document because it does talk about construction, future construction of I-75, and how it may impact the residents in that area. Don't see that anyone has signed up for public comment on items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy. There is no closed session request this evening, so we are adjourned. Thank you for coming this evening.